Call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, December 13th.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Waymire?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Gracious Father God, we thank you for another day you've given us, Lord God. We ask for your direction upon this day, and Lord God, watch what we say, watch what we do, Lord God. Bring glory to your name, and I pray, God, that you bless each one here, bless our county workers, Lord, and we're thankful for them, and we give you the praise and the glory. Amen. And you all have a Merry Christmas.
You too.
Thank you.
Enjoy the reason for the season.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any correspondence from organizational business?
No, not at this time.
All right. Is there a public comment?
No.
All right. Just reminder, citizens are in speak on an item not on the agenda, may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regards to personnel matters or pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Chair Wolford?
Morning.
Chair Wolford, 3962 Reno Road. Just wondered how we started talking in September about the speed limit reduction on Reno Road between Tennessee and Texas. Wondered how that was coming, and all the trucks are running hard on Reno Road, and the dust is horrendous because the east end of the county is dry right now, and that makes it all worse. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Is that it for public comment? Brings us to consent agenda, which today would include approving, considering approving minutes for December 6th, our meeting on that day. We have tax change orders in the amount of positive $8,080.42, and 24 emergency vehicle permits you've been able to review. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as read.
Your second?
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. Do you have Mr. Wolford's contact information?
I can certainly get it.
Or can you get that from him?
Get it from him.
Make sure somebody gets back to you and talks with you. So, all right. Thank you. Under items of business, the first of which would be to discuss bids received for the Health Department renovations.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
We did let bids a couple weeks ago, a few weeks ago, and did receive two bids back from two companies. One was from Lloyd Builders in Ottawa for 113.5, and the other from the Wilson Group out of Greenwood, Missouri for 75.5. So, significant difference. We did note that the Wilson Group is not currently licensed in Ottawa. In conversation, they would be licensed before, of course, they could do the work. But would entertain any questions you may have?
Pretty good difference there.
Yes, there is.
And I had this up for discussion because I frankly was hoping to call on your experience, Chair Waymire, in terms of the licensing. I don't think that's problematic. It's my understanding if you approve their bid, he'll get the license and they'll be good to go.
Just review, make sure you have the credentials, the main thing, insurance.
Yeah.
Well, and experience, or either, there's a few education requirements or experience, but if you have those, it's just like getting a dog license.
And they've fulfilled those requirements, and they had a number of references, and I asked Midge to call all of them, and she reports to me that they're universally acclaimed, and so everyone who's used them seems to be happy with them. And so I do feel like we've done our due diligence there. The licensing was the only question I had, and if that's something that's easily attainable, then, you know, then obviously, you know, there is a significant difference there that probably needs to be recognized.
They wouldn't have any problem getting it. Where are they out of?
Greenwood, Missouri.
Missouri.
And they have done major contracts federally, for federal buildings, for state buildings, local government as well. It's pretty extensive.
All right. Is this about where you thought, what you were planning on spending?
It's less than I thought, which gives us a little wiggle room.
I remember we talked about it. Sure.
Yeah. Well, you know, initially I only had kind of a rough estimate of somewhere around 1,000, 1,010, so, you know, I really was pleasantly surprised. That gives us room to make sure we get things correct.
Good. If everyone's comfortable with this, would like to make a motion to approve the Wilson Group for the submitted bids for Health Department renovations.
I'll make a motion, we approve the bid from Wilson Group Incorporated for 75,500 bid.
Your second?
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Our second item of business, Pink Pearson's here from the Solid Waste Department. Talk about the possibility of adding the Solid Waste Department to the Emergency Communication System.
Good morning.
Good morning. We would like to ask for the Emergency Communication System for the Solid Waste Department. Currently, we've been using CB radios that were purchased several years ago, which doesn't give us direct contact with, like, Riden Bridge or emergency management if we would need to. It's very limited to our department only. Mr. Hyatt, when he was here, opted not to go this route, and I'm just here to request that we do this for the betterment of our department and for the safety of all of our employees.
You also push snow in the winter, right?
Yes, we did. Well, yes, our guys, some of our guys are utilized for that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Mostly that's noxious weed as far as the trucks and Riden Bridge, but we do have some guys in solid waste that do utilize those trucks at times.
Okay. Part of the reason I have her in front of you today is Motorola has held our pricing on the radios flat, but that expires on December 15th, and so we'll get them at the same rate as everyone else has gotten them in terms of, you've got the numbers in front of you, it's just short of 20,000. This would come out of the Solid Waste Fund, which currently has a budget, I believe, in excess of 900,000, so certainly there's not any budgetary issues there.
What, how many? Would we be talking, how much?
Got that in front of you.
I do.
I guess for the benefit of everybody.
Five portables.
Five portables, yes, and then two desktop radios.
Installation wasn't included in that. Will we install ourselves, or we'll have to hire that, say, they get that subbed out by somebody?
Yeah, we've been subbing that out on, because we, when you go doing that yourself, you risk voiding the warranty if you don't do it right, so.
Okay. This would be for $14,372.
It'd actually be for $19,229.65.
With the...
So, could you get any trade-in at all for the radios you have, you think? Are they...
I seriously doubt it. I don't know that for sure, but I doubt.
So, if we have any use for those, or they just have to be scrapped? Purple wave.
There's always purple wave.
Yeah.
So, the question becomes then, if you're currently using a citizen's banned radio frequency, what frequency are you looking at? Do you have a license obtained, or do you plan to operate underneath another county frequency?
Would you be in with Public Works?
I'm guessing, that's my question. Are you going to go underneath the Public Works frequency?
Yeah, the plan would be to put them on the Public Works.
Because that would, that would be another expense if there's not a frequency already obtained, so.
Gotcha. Moving into that?
Yeah.
What we would do is we would go to the state and ask for another talk group. Talk groups don't cost us anything, and it'll be their own separate, it would be their own separate thing. So, it's just another talk group that would go on the system. So, they would have their own, be able to talk to themselves and stuff like that, separate from Public Works, and about that. They'll have everybody else's talk groups in there, kind of like channels, that'll be just their own talk group. So, it won't cost us anything.
You'd use these to talk to, what are some emergency situations you would need the Solid Waste Department? That'd be for you.
Considering that we have recycling out at the south end of town, and of course, transfer station out the north side, and I'm basically based out of the south side here, if they have an emergency out there and they possibly don't have maybe a cellphone communication on site, you know, and can't get to the scale house, you know, that radio could, I think, could come in very handy.
I do think, as well, Colt, given the natural relationship between solid waste and public works, I do think the operators out in solid waste, particularly as we get into these winter months, I do think they can be utilized, and we ought to look at utilizing them in major snow events to help clear roads, and these radios would obviously be very handy in those types of events, so.
I feel that we've talked about, and we are interested in looking into some more multitasking, and this would be just an opportunity to be set up in that position in case we are using some of their people to do other jobs there in the snow or whatever. And my opinion is that it's coming out of their budget, and their budget would not have any problem with handling it, so I have no problem with doing this myself.
Just that it promotes better communication and more efficient use of resources. This saves us money in the long run.
Any questions? We would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the radios and the rest of the system totaling $19,229.65. I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Third item is consider purchase of bariatric equipment for the ambulance department.
Good morning, Commission.
Morning.
This has been a ongoing purchase that we've been looking at for about the last three years. I have, myself and my division chief, wrote three grants to the state for the craft grant, which is a Kansas Rural Funding Grant, to obtain equipment for bariatric transport. We've been unsuccessful because they've deemed heart monitors, that kind of stuff, to be a higher priority than patient transport. The unfortunate necessary is we're, our population's getting bigger, and our community, we are transporting more and more bariatric patients, which has resulted in back injuries and difficulties for my crews, fire crews throughout the county. We, I know I've probably talked to most of you at least once or twice about this. I've got support from a lot of the fire departments also, because what we've done is we looked at a total system. We initially started looking at a bariatric outfit in our trucks for bariatric transport, which is a cot capable of transporting 1,200 pounds on the ground. A ramp system, which would be able to fold out the back with a winch to be able to drag those in there, so we don't have to lift or maneuver those patients up in the air. One of the things that we have had happen is our cots are rated at 750 pounds up, but we've had patients on them that when they are up, they'll move, they will bend or tweak the cot. We did $6,800 worth of repairs on a cot last year for that happening, while they were up there. If that would have fallen, we could have had a lot of liability and stuff with it. It's just becoming a more frequent thing. So, with that, the proposal initially we were talking about was outfitting all of our ambulances with the ability to handle that cot and the bariatric loading equipment. With what we're noticing now, and what's happening, and where our injuries have happened, have not been loading patients, it's been removing them from the residence. You've got somebody that's of size that's back in a small room, and you have to maneuver them out, or they're in a bed, and getting them off that bed into something or get them out. While we were out in Vegas, that was one of the things I wanted to look at is the, besides for active shooter, the other big thing out there is bariatric transport. So, we looked at a lot of different devices, and one of them we looked at is called the evacuation jack or the hover jack, and what it is, is a large air mattress that's got four chambers in it, so if you have somebody that's on the ground, that's even fallen and has had shoulder surgery, that, you can't lift them off the ground, is what this is, is you can roll them over onto it, use an air compressor basically, and raise it up to the height of a bed, and then either move them over to the bed, or if they just need some help lifting, you can roll them over and set them, and it takes a lot of the lift work, back work out of the, that. The other thing they have that is really nice is they're called a hover mat, and if you remember what an air hockey table was, you had the air blowing up to hold it. What these are, is they're a mat you put underneath people. It's got little holes in the bottom, when you air it up, you can maneuver 700 pounds with two people with little force, because it's got a cushion of air. The whole system is, and the way it would work is if you have somebody in a bed, you could put them on that, move them over to the hover jack. The hover jack does have a cover lower bottom, can be used to slide patients outside the residence, where then you would move them over to the bed and then load them into the truck, which is going to be more comfortable for the patient and safer for our crews. The whole system is $26,115, which I know is an excessive amount of money, but one back injury is going to take up that kind of money, so for the, for the safety of our crews and the patients that we are seeing in this community, I think that's money well spent. I will tell you, this is probably going to be something that's not only utilized in our community. When we did write the grant to the state, we had Coffey County, Miami County, Anderson County all offer letters of support, because there's nobody down here that actually does those transfers. So, if you have a bariatric patient, you're waiting for American Medical Response or APS to come from the city to transport those, and if that patient needs to go, like when we had the other day in an emergent situation, we can't wait, so we're stuck having to do that with equipment that is less important for the job. So, with that, it might offer some revenue opportunities by going and transporting those. We are working right now with some other places I'm billing to see if there's an exit, if there is an extra charge or Medicaid rate to pay for that, to get some of that money back, and I will be able to let you know once we get that figured out. But coming into the end of the year, we do have the money in our equipment reserve to purchases, and like I said, we've exhausted a lot of opportunities with grants, and with what we've had this year with injuries and that, I think this is the time we need to act on it. So, I'll open up for any questions that you guys might have.
So, we didn't get anything from the grant at all?
No, we did a matching grant with it, and it was honestly just for the bariatric cot and the, and the stuff for the ambulances, so it was only about 16,000, and we offered 50% and still did not obtain that. And when I talked to the Board of EMS and looked at what they have given money for, it was for heart monitors, CPR devices, stuff like that, and most of that honestly went to your western, your western Kansas, really rural services. They don't have the 12-lead capabilities and stuff that does take a higher priority, they said, than patient transport, so that's why we didn't get that.
How you transport this stuff to the site, and do you know ahead of time that you're going to need that at a site?
Is what we've worked on is, if we have this equipment, our backup ambulance will have it set up all the time. So, right now, we have our Sprinter, which is our basic transfer, our transfer vehicle, and then we have one truck that sits out every month for a last-out response. We'll set that truck up for it. We have went and are in the process of working now on marking these addresses with something, so when dispatch does get a call, we can see that extra manpower is needed or that. So, I can tell you on top of my head where those people are in the community now, because we're already listening to make sure we can get extra help there. So, it will be something that can be, can be taken to the scene if need be.
We've currently probably had AMR come down a number of times and take these transports, I presume, or some of these calls, is that correct, Nick?
That's a good thing, question. What we have ran into is, and I'm not here by...
It's been a problem because of...
Yeah, we've had problems, because what they will do is they will send a crew of two people to transport these patients, and when they get down here, they will expect our fire departments and us to help them either get the patients out of the house or to get them in. One back injury that we've had happen was a fault of that. They started moving the patient, ran into trouble. When we got there, we had to act quickly, and that resulted in a back injury, and it wasn't anything we were even called to do, we were called to help. So, if we had this equipment, we would hopefully be the ones that are going there and being able to come up with a plan before somebody only sends two people down here.
More control of our own people.
Yes. And the other thing we do notice with that also is not that they're bringing, that they're bringing them in too, we'll wait till they get down here, and they'll have them at the front door of the residence and then call us to help get them in. So, if we have this stuff, we can probably work to facilitate these so we can handle them better.
And over the last five years or so, rough estimate of the number of people that have sustained an injury on the job from this, Nick, I mean, I mean, and some of these are career-ending too.
Over the last five years.
A lot of investment into people's lives because of the training that we've provided and what they received, I guess.
Just this year alone, we had four. Going back, I'm going to say we're averaging probably one to two a year of a tweak back or something that results in it. And most of the time, honestly, it's not the transporting of it, it's the moving it from the residence or moving it when you get to the hospital, because you don't have the stuff for you to do it. And that's why we started looking at the hover mat, that's something that is a more rigid device, because we don't have the setup for it, you know? The hospital, when they just read under, upstairs, they put in some bariatric lifts. This has been a conversation for a while, and it's one of those that you don't want to have, but was the necessary that we look at it.
And I would add that this is something that Nick and I have been discussing for quite some time, and we have explored all of our options. We've tried to obtain grants, we've priced various pieces of equipment from various vendors. We have done our due diligence on this, and what's in front of you is really the culmination and the best offer that we've seen, so.
I think it's money well invested.
Nick, what's the threshold for utilizing this for, what's the threshold for starting or getting this equipment out? Is it like 200 pounds or 300 pounds, or?
I...
Depends on the crew that's out there.
The threshold to get it out is going to be determined on, as we, as we get the equipment and figure it out, honestly. I think we're going to run into situations where it could be, it's going to be used more frequently than we know due to the fact that we're lifting a lot of patients off the ground now that have shoulder injuries, that we increase the risk of those patients by what we have to lift or in the smaller rooms, where if you have something you can put under, so I can't, at this time, demonize the weight, that kind of stuff with it. I think we're going to have a lot of uses for it. Does that answer the question?
That's what I figured, might even use it on 150-pound person too, because of circumstance.
Well, you know, that's the conversation, what is bariatric? It all goes. You could have somebody that's four foot tall and 300 pounds, or somebody that's six foot four and 500 pounds, it all depends on everything that's going on, and with the more and more people having limb replaced or joint replacements, you can't lift like we used to. You can't go grab them under the arms and stand them up, and, you know, that's, or the size of the houses and people piling stuff in it, trying to get enough people in the lifts, so that's why I'm truly excited about just the hover lift itself, to get underneath them and help that. Plus, our world used to be full of a lot of, I don't know if I say it the right way, but a lot of people that were being able to lift a lot, and we're seeing a lot more people, or we're not having the assistance we used to have. You used to have a ton of firemen show up out in the county, and now you're lucky if you have one, because during the day, eight to five, so this could help with the vampire and that stuff that we're not getting now, so there's a lot of benefits, I believe, that will come out of this.
Ever be, ever be a time where you slid it underneath the car that tipped over to help raise the car up?
It'll lift 1,200 pounds, so, but no, I don't, they've got bags for that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve, purchase the bariatric equipment?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Fourth item of business is with the Emergency Management Department, and it's consider approving the Emergency Operations Plan and Commodity Flow Study Update Agreement.
Good morning.
Morning.
What I put before you guys is, we applied for the HMEP grant, which is Hazard Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant, and received it, and you guys already signed off on that for 14,500. What that grant was for is to do an update for our Emergency Operations Plan and a Commodity Flow Study. We have chosen EFM Planning to do that update. Out of three quotes that we received, we received three quotes from Tetra Tech and EM Fusion to do it. EFM was the cheapest at 14.5, and that's the company that we've been using for quite a while, and they've actually housed our Emergency Operations Plan for us on their web servers and stuff like that, double-backed up and however they say it. So, this is the agreement that they need to get signed so that they can get started on getting that updated for the Emergency Operations Plan. We have a statutory obligation to have an Emergency Operations Plan that's up to date. Ours expires in August of 18, so if they don't do it, I guess I get, I get to sit down and write it. So, if you have any questions whatsoever.
How often does this have to be done, update?
The update, every five years.
Five years. Questions for Tom? We pretty well went over this, I think, when you brought us the grant application, so we would like to make a motion to approve this item.
Make a motion and we approve it.
Your second?
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Thank you. Fifth item of business, consider entering into an agreement with Rural Water District Number Two for water relocation, water line relocation.
Yeah, this is something we've discussed as part of our obligations out at Proximity Park, which, as you know, involve rebuilding Kingman and Montana roads. With the increased right-of-way we had to acquire, we discovered that Rural Water District Two has water lines within that right-of-way, and so our project necessitates relocating those lines. Given that I'm not an engineer, I've asked Brian Austin from Bartlett and West to come down and answer any potential questions that you may have. Attached is just the relocation agreement. The cost of the relocation is going to be, we're estimating 108,000. I will tell you that when we originally started looking at this, the cost was going to be greatly in excess of that. I mean, we were looking at something, and I don't know if either of you recall, I think it was closer to 200,000, but in working with the City of Ottawa's Utilities Director, Dennis Tharp, we were able to find a solution that, and I don't remember what the other cost was, but... we were able to find a solution that, and I don't remember what the other cost was, but I think-
It was in the hundred-seventies, I think.
I, I think it was. And I think we knocked seventy or eighty thousand dollars off of that, thanks in large part to Mr. Tharp's. I mean, he just kind of outside-the-box intuitive thinking. So I want to recognize that because that, that's just fantastic for us, so. And I, if you have any questions for Brian, he's right here, happy to answer them.
Well, this relocation, are, are they improving their line at the same time? Making higher capacity too?
Yeah. I, like Derek said, I'm Brian Austin with Bartlett and West. They are improving in the fact that they're updating their system. It's an old line. But this particular line serves very few customers. And one of the reasons we were able to bring the cost down, and I do believe it was around the hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar mark, is the line right now exists on the east side of Montana Road. And there's a connection off Lebette Terrace where we come down through private property and then west along Lebette Road to serve those few, few customers out the north into Montana Road. So we were able to eliminate that stretch between Kingman and Montana Road is, is why that cost came down. But as far as improving their system, there's really no capacity improvements because there's just very few customers. And then, as Derek mentioned, Mr. Tharp or the City of Ottawa is able to connect the few, I think there's five Rural Water District customers north of I-35 on Montana Road that we'll connect to from the, the City of Ottawa water, water main and make that connection.
This water district gets their water from Ottawa as a main source?
Yeah, that's, that is correct.
Where's, where's their main line then?
It is, yeah, twenty, Twenty-third Street, I believe. It runs in, in the right-of-way, Twenty-third Street coming from, from Main Street.
Any questions?
All this came about because of the roads, correct? The easements and so forth that was interfering with the lines?
Yep.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the water line relocation agreement?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agreement to move the water line with Rural Order District Number Two.
Thank you.
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
I want to disclose that, before I vote, that I am one of the representatives of an organization that is one of those five, but I don't believe that I have a conflict because this is a savings to the county. So I just wanted to declare that, so I would vote yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Colt, before we move on to staff reports, I do want to acknowledge Brian. As you all know, we had our board retreat Monday and a huge portion of that was a proximity park update. He was of tremendous assistance to me in preparing that update. There was a lot of info he got to me on what I consider to be pretty short notice. And so been incredibly happy with him, happy with Darren. Bartlett and West have done a very good job by us as well as the city on this project. And so I thank him for that.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to staff reports.
And with that said, I don't have anything to report, so.
All right. Sheriff's Office. James, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Since last week.
That's fine, all right. Jim, anything for Public Works?
No, sir.
Commissioners' comments board reports?
Well, I can start. I went to Richmond City Council last night. It was a fairly short meeting. They had unfinished business. They was going to talk about code enforcement and a credit card they were having to look into purchasing. They tabled both of those again because of, still seeking some information on those. They did approve the certain malt beverages license for the Highway Fifty-Nine Station. And then they talked about some repairs and maintenance that they're doing on their water plant. And that was pretty much the extent of, of that meeting. And that's all I've been to.
Ready?
Last Wednesday afternoon or lunch, I attended the Regional Advisory Committee for the Merzine Watershed Meeting over in Paola. Very interesting to hear what types of future uses and needs we're going to have with the water in this area. Then Monday night, I attended the Ran, the Lane City Council Meeting. I know they transferred some money from their bonded industry to their water fund. They discussed unpaid water bills. They also looked at some ordinances from some other cities and have basically given a packet to all their council members to look at. I think they're using the City of Parker and trying to come up with what ordinances they need or don't need. There, there was a question, well, they had, also there are new council member that will take office in January was there, got to meet him. There was a question about posting ordinances on, there's, there's requirements, I know, for cities to have them available, people, but they're on a website, they don't. But is there a connection to our website that City of Lane has? Can you go to our website and go to Lane or that on our website, or do you know?
If they, if they have a website, they can give it to us and we can link it. We do have, under our governmental tab on our pages, we have, each of the cities have their information. We try our very best to keep their city councils up to date on there. But sometimes people resign and they appoint new ones and they don't tell us. And so we can't always keep it absolutely up to date, but we do our best trying to do that.
Okay. And, and, and I did tell them that in January, the first fall is on a Monday, which is Rantoul City Council Meeting, and it'll be moved to the eighth, which is Lane. So I will probably be going to the Rantoul one because they will have a complete new council and that. And then in February, on the, the Lane date, I'm going to be out of town. So we had a little discussion about that. I really enjoy the people that are there and they're very concerned about their city. They, they spend a lot of time and effort, you know, doing what they can do with the limited resources they have. So whatever the county helps them that way, that's great. And I know Jan's a good resource to those people, so that works real well. That's it, Colt.
I attended the chamber board meeting yesterday morning. And a lot of the discussion that took place was over budget, where they were at and next year's budget and the filling of the position that was at the front desk that was half of the chamber and half of SCDC and how that was going to be filled and what they really were looking at and job requirements. And that's pretty much the gist of, of a meeting that took about an hour and a half, so.
Didn't mention it last week, but on the first, I went to the First Friday Forum and they had a curator for the World War II One Memorial up in Kansas City. And they're, they're changing that exhibit constantly. And they're in the period during World War One, the years that we were active in the war, and they're changing the exhibitors. And they'll be culminating that in two thousand nineteen, that exhibit. And also there at the forum, they're going to look at the format going forward or something on the First Friday Forum, after the first year. That's all.
All right. On Monday, we had our retreat, we all attended. And I guess to the outside world knows, I would call that a very, very productive use of time. Of course, the goal of those type things is not to make decisions or, or anything like that. But it's fair to say, coming out of that, we all have the same set of facts in front of us and understanding of the reality that's in the county. And that is very useful. It doesn't guarantee we're going to agree on how to interpret those facts or what the best course of action on any given item is. But I think whenever there's a disaster, nobody ever steps back and, and says that there was plenty of communication. So no amount of communication is probably too much, so. Maybe wraps up the gist of what we did Monday. Anyone else have anything to add? Look for a motion to adjourn then.
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.